Okay, well, Secretary Doctor, you're apologizing again for not responding. It's like we just had this conversation, excuse me. Welcome to this meeting of the Okemos Board of Education. Secretary Doxy, could you call the roll to order, please?
Yes, President Buffett, Tom Buffett.
Yes, here.
Jason Burns.
Here.
Katie Kavanaugh. Andrew Phelps.
Here.
Lainey Schruth.
Here.
Gillian Nguyen.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome to this regular meeting of the OCS Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the business of the school board. There will be two opportunities of public comment on the and the kind of parameters are written on the agenda and also on the agenda on board book. At the appropriate point in the agenda, the board president will call upon individuals who have submitted a blue card or chat message and that individual's microphone will be unmuted for their comments. Tonight, however, we are going to start the meeting by adjourning to executive session and actually for for a couple of reasons. First is for superintendent evaluation and also discuss an attorney client privilege communication that we received.
I move it the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to section eight parent A and eight parent H of the Okemans Act. For purpose of discussing the superintendent evaluation and attorney client privilege information.
Support.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Winn. This does recall a roll call vote.
Tom Buffett.
Yes.
Jason Burns.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Andrew Phelps.
Yes.
Lainey Schruth.
Yes.
It's okay. Gillian Nguyen.
Yes.
And I'm Ayes.
Seven oh, okay, we will adjourn to executive session currently. Hey, welcome back, Secretary Doxy, could you please call the roll, the reconvene?
Yes, Tom Buffett.
Here.
Of Jason Burns. Katie Kavanaugh. Andrew Phelps.
Here.
Lainey Schruth.
Here.
Gillian Nguyen.
Here.
Thank you so much. Um, we now have our opportunity for a mission minute around the pack and it's an opportunity for and board members to highlight anything in particular they'd like to share that's been going on in Okemos. Providing so trustee Phelps, please.
It's not about openness, but it is about, I guess, mission minute. So took some time off last week and went up north and attended the MBSB annual leadership conference. I was up there for three days. Great event. I was telling some folks my social battery is drained, but it met a lot of good people, made a lot of good contacts. Learned a lot of stuff. I'm in the process of getting my community feedback certification. So I took a lot of classes on that. So which was helpful. Just a couple of takeaways. I had a chance to talk to a couple of different, you know, board members, superintendents from other districts who are our comp districts that we use. And I found it really interesting that they are also comp us. So there's a lot of, you know, back and forth, I think there and they're interested in what we are doing just as much as we're interested in what they're doing to learn. So I think there's opportunities maybe as we look forward of ways to kind of share information and, you know, kind of bounce ideas off each other and things because we do have a lot of similarities. So it was kind of it made me smile to think that we're not just looking at them, they're looking at us too, which is a good thing. So that was really helpful. And just another little anecdote, I think, we know in us and Okemos, we need to kind of just think about, I can't tell you how many people came up to me and said, oh, I know Okemos, I drive by the high school every time I come to visit my insert relative here at Michigan State, or I'm going to a football game or whatever. So I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, our high school says a lot about us and people, you know, that's a point of pride for us, I guess, because I get a lot of compliments on that. So it was a great event. I'm exhausted. Yesterday I did nothing but sit down on my couch and watch football, which was wonderful. And I did not talk to a single person, but it was a great event and look forward to kind of sharing my learnings as we go throughout the year.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anyone else? I'll share a couple of things. One is that the Okemos Education Foundation has has its annual banquet. I think it's the nineteenth, is that right? Yeah, November nineteenth and tickets are now available on the OEF website. So if you have not been before, it's a fantastic event where we celebrate excellence in the schools. And this will be the first year in a while that we haven't had Matt Ottinger. So it'll be a new, a new era for that event, but but looking forward to that. And I just encourage trustees to come if you can and and community members, it's really wonderful event. The other thing I'll share and I want to steal Finn's thunder, should he be talking about the orchestra concert last Wednesday? So I'm not going to focus on the music. It was phenomenal, but that's all I'll say. But I got there early as the parents who need to drop off kids or want to do, and I wore a too heavy sweater. And so I was starting to sweat. So I went outside and I held the door for people as they came in. And a point of pride for Okemos is raising good human beings. And to a student, people were, everyone was, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Recognizing that small gesture on my part when I was just cooling off, but I just, it just kind of, you know, just made me feel really good about again, what we're, we're doing in our, in our community and in this district. So thank you all. I did not get tips. I did not get tips, but their, their appreciation was plenty. Other things, yes, trustee Schruth.
So Okemos Archery hosted the first ten meters tournament this past weekend and we had twenty one different schools come in and participate. So that was really good.
You say twenty three schools?
Twenty one.
Twenty one, wow.
But then Michigan.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anything, anyone else? Superintendent Hood, yes.
Yeah, I have a shout out to a staff member. Trustees may know or trustees do know and others, the word is getting out that Rihanna Walworth, my long term executive assistant and a long time executive assistant, HR generalist for the district has taken a job that's a promotion outside the district. And when I think about opportunities to be proud of our pack and who represents our pack, Rihanna certainly comes to mind being student centered, caring about her fellow employees. Someone that has always been willing to take on extra work and just, just make things right for those around her. Rihanna's earned this opportunity and is just outstanding individual and such an asset to our district and will be missed because of all that expertise she has and, and all the care she has for those around her and those relationships she's developed over the years. So just an opportunity for me to thank her publicly before she goes to her next experience on, on her journey and, you know, she's become a dear friend of mine, but is just an outstanding employee for the district and be, be remiss if I did not just thank her publicly and say she represents the best of the Okemos schools.
Thank you. And I'll just say on behalf of the board, she has supported our work just impeccably. So thank you. Thank you, Rihanna, for your outstanding service. You say twenty years.
Yeah.
Amazing. Um, okay. We will move on now. A discussion move forward, the student trip. Justin Valla, the orchestra director is here and I, I was just trying to search and find your name, but I didn't quite get there in time. I forgot. Ursula Glassmacher, who is at Chippewa, is here as well, please.
And this is Ursula's first trip presentation. So yeah, welcome.
Want to start? No. Okay, so we've been trying to make it more of a yearly thing to take the eighth grade orchestra on a trip where they get to go someplace really great, see a major symphony, spend some time together, building, you know, team building. And this year we chose Cleveland. We went to Chicago last year. And we're thinking about doing something a little bit different. So we have two proposals there, one from World Strides and one from Gerber Tours in front of you. We, we worked with World Strides before. World Strides is also the company we're working with, taking us to Germany this year. We like how they handle things, but we wanted to make sure that we put, we put a couple of bids out there. So a couple of quick things to notice on the papers. The World Strides price is a little bit higher than the Gerber Tours, but the main reason for that is meals. With World Strides, all of the meals are provided or they'll have ten fifteen dollars that we'll hand to kids as we get off the bus for them to get lunch in their chaperone groups, whereas the Gerber Tour, it's more like, yep, you bring your own money and you're, you're in charge of that. Personally, as, as a parent, I like knowing that I can send my kid on a trip without any money in their pocket, or if they, they lose something, they still, I still know they're going to get fed. So I kind of like that a little bit more, but it does explain the price difference on both of those. We've already done, excuse me, a fundraiser earlier this fall. Any eighth grader that participated in the fundraiser, whatever they earned goes towards the cost of their trip. So students already have some money kind of banked up for that. We've also talked about some other opportunities for fundraising to going to some local groups, offering performances for, for businesses, that kind of thing. So we're hoping that some kids take us up on that. World Strides also offers a fundraising option through their website. So they can tell parents, family, friends, and other people can donate directly to the cost of their trip. Gerber Tours does not offer that, but they do have other fundraisers fundraisers that they kind of promote on their website if anybody is interested in looking. So we're hoping, you know, to get approval for the trip. I think we're leaning more towards World Strides because we know what they have, we trust what they have. But we want it up. We can open up any questions from anybody you have about which will ever tour the trip in general.
Trustee, trustee Doxy.
Yes, thank you. I did notice the difference between Gerber Gerber and the World Strides on the meals. But question, so the Gerber Tours offered the quad, triple, double and single price points. So in previous trips, is it just kind of common that the students are used to doing a quad option and not having those other options?
Yeah, we encourage the quad because the, I, the more you get them together, you know, then they, they form their little friend groups and they sign up for the rooms themselves. We don't assign them rooms. So it's more just friend time, you know, so we encourage the quads. If we push World Strides, they would give us options, pricing options. But we tend to like, hey, this doesn't exist. So just go with this for now. If, if there was a student that really needed an option, we could ask World Strides for that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions? Oh, trustee Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Um, so it's one night, right? One night in a hotel and it's, it's pricey for one night, but I'm assuming, I mean, most of the money would probably be tickets. Is that what we're?
Tickets, it's the bus, it's the meals. Yeah, it's the hotel. Yeah.
Thank you. And it's just for the audio or for people at home. Can you just tell us so they get there, go to the concert and then Rock and Roll Hall of Fame?
Chicago Symphony Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. I think there's
There was another one too, zoo, maybe?
There's a zoo in the rainforest. There's a Great Lakes Science Center and Omnimax. And then we get to have a workshop with someone at, I'm not sure World Strides hasn't pinned down yet, but there's a workshop with someone from a university that will come in and work with the kids as well. So we'll take the, our spring concert music with us and we'll perform it for them and then they'll do a workshop with the kids too.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you again for getting, doing the legwork to get a couple of bids and also for organizing this wonderful trip for students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let us know if you have any other questions and middle school, her first middle school concert is tomorrow night. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just confirm this will be on next meeting's agenda for approval.
Action. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, discussion move forward regarding the state budget update and OPS budget revisions, superintendent Hood.
Yeah, so executive director Lance is coming up. She has been working hard on the digesting the state budget and all the many intricacies that are in a state budget that was released, as you know, very, very late and has some difference approaches than perhaps in the past in some areas. So we want to be very careful and intentional with how we present it. So a lot of praise to Liz for sifting through as much of that as she could for tonight. That's not finalized as you'll hear. There's still some outstanding items that she'll let you know about, but bringing some of the big buckets to you for consideration. So at least the board and community can understand the initial impact on our budget or, or, or future rise budget. So Liz, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
All righty. So tonight, the first one I'm going to review with you is just to show a comparison between what the governor proposed, the House, the Senate proposed, and then what was enacted. Because there's especially one area that I want to point out. We all know that, you know, we had the three ninety two from the governor and the Senate four hundred, but was restricted and the House eventually went to four seventeen with a quasi state aid bill. It was more of a stop gap measure. What was enacted was positive four forty two, four hundred and forty two dollars, which would bring the foundation allowance up to ten thousand fifty dollars. Transportation funding was maintained with governor and Senate proposal eliminated in the House, but maintained in the final version. And that's about three hundred and twenty six thousand to the district. School safety, mental health went through several iterations, but finally what was agreed to was increased funding. However, there was a lovely little caveat that you must comply with an investigation if there is a mass, mass casualty event. I would just like to say that the definition of mass casualty is very, very broad. It's doesn't mean that there always has to be some incidents that involve harm or, or even potentially death in some other situations. So it's an extremely broad definition, but you have to comply with a comprehensive investigation. If you want the funding, you have to waive your attorney client privilege and you have to fully comply with every aspect of the investigation. And this investigation is done through the state. So it is a separate investigation that would be done and we would have to comply with everything if we wanted to get the funding. There's more on that later on in the agenda, I believe, for further discussion by the board. Last year, just for perspective, our twenty four, twenty five grand award was five hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. Employee healthcare retirement offset, this is the three percent that employees had withdrawn from their paychecks for the last thirteen, fourteen years. Newer employees don't have that option. So this was with a change in the retirement system years ago. As of October one of this year, that three percent was no longer withheld from staff. But rather the district has to pay for it now. So it was transferred, who pays for that? And it became a district cost. So it, there were several one time funding to help the districts for one year. Governor at fifty percent, the Senate at eighty five, and the House just eliminated it. So it came in at about, we'd get about eighty percent of the new costs that we're going to incur, which is about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the district. This is one where this next category and really why I wanted to review back what, what happened in these other iterations. Section forty one, set one forty seven A one retirement cost offset. So this is what can happen in the, the conference committee. I am why we have to be cautious when we're budgeting because this retirement cost offset is a general fund. There is no offsetting grant or we have to reimburse employees for this or that. This is a positive impact to our general fund that we can use unrestricted dollars. The governor, the Senate and the House all maintain that funding level. However, in the conference committee, that was removed. That section was eliminated. And that's about three hundred and seventy four thousand dollars. So this is just pointing out that we, we do have to be cautious because things can happen in that conference committee that we had no inkling was going to be an issue that was going to be discussed. So I just wanted to bring that forward. In addition to what's up here, mostly I'm trying to show what's going to impact our unrestricted dollars or if there's anything that we need to think about in terms of grant funding, but there was a grant that was also eliminated that we, that impacts a district. And that's a section thirty five A five early literacy grant, which we get about sixty six thousand dollars a year for. We primarily use that to fund some summer programming and just a little bit of our MTSS staff, just a very small amount for that, but that will be something that Assistant Superintendent Bailey will have to factor in. She and I will work together to see if we have any carryover, but if not, then she will have to factor that in as she plans on summer programming. So now how did this impact Okemos as a district? We budgeted a three hundred dollar increase for foundation. I'm sorry, I think I left this slide in here and I, but we budgeted for a three hundred dollar increase in foundation. Yeah, I left this in. I apologize. This slide should have been deleted. We'll go on to the next one, next slide. They looked a lot of like the two slides. Other major categories of changes. So at risk funds were, grants were increased by twenty five percent bilingual and early literacy targeted in the bilingual. So those are both increased by twenty five percent. Twelve E, this is an infrastructure competitive grant. Last board meeting trustee Burns talked about that grant and, you know, asking, you know, making sure that we would apply for it if that, if that was eligible. I just wanted to point out that this is a competitive grant and there's a lot of grant funding within the state aid act for which districts may or may not be allowed for. And this is one that we most likely will have zero chance of getting. It's a priority is given to economically disadvantaged districts and districts that can't bond. So I just want to caution when we see headlines of, oh, there's infrastructure grants, the devil's in the detail of these things. So I just wanted to bring that up because I know it was talked about last time and that we, we sure will try if we can, but most likely will, we, this is, was not geared toward districts like Okemos because we can bond and we are not economically disadvantaged. There is a section called eighteen D where the legislature said when the target foundation or our basic foundation, so the ten thousand fifty dollars, when that increases that we should be making permanent increases to our staff salaries. And they use educators and all staff. So basically it's all staff salaries. That is non-binding section that can't be enforced. So that is something that is in there. But, oh, and also in that section, priority was to be given to starting staff wages. So there's a lot of language in there about what they felt we should be doing with our money, but they, that is something that they are not able to control. And again, if they mandated that, that would be an unfunded mandate. So how would that happen when all these increases have to be negotiated? So just wanted to put that out there in case anyone heard about that, but it, we have heard that is non-binding language that that can't be done. There is a twenty seven L one time educator compensation. This is a grant that has been given to us two years ago, I believe it was in the state aid act. In the definition was more narrow. In this version of the state aid act, it was a pretty broad definition where they basically, it's the district can choose how that those funds are distributed because of staff, it's was basically all staff was mentioned in that section. But that if there is, if a group does have a, or a part of a union that those would be subject to bargaining, we'd have to bargain those wages. That is estimated to be about six hundred and seventy four thousand dollars that we would get from that section. Next slide, this is where I'm talking about the differences in, in the state aid and what the impact to Okemos was and what the impact will be in our revised budget. We budgeted three hundred dollars for foundation allowance to nine thousand nine hundred and eight dollars, which was almost one point four million. At four hundred and forty two dollars, that brings us to two million fifty thousand dollars approximately. So in addition, in our revised budgets of about six hundred and fifty eight thousand. That three percent employee healthcare cost offset, we budgeted that at about fifty percent, which is two hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. We can increase that by a hundred and seventy nine thousand to four hundred and, for one time money, this is one time, we'll budget, move it up to four hundred and sixty six thousand. And that one forty seven A retirement cost offset was three hundred and seventy four thousand dollars. So we'll revise that down. The net of these three was a positive four hundred and sixty three thousand to the district. Uh, that has, that was what's impacted in terms of our, the state aid budget. Now I want to talk about our revised budget and this superintendent hood, and I'll talk about later was working not only to review the state aid budget, but trying to work hard to move up our timing of our revised budgets. And I'll talk more about that in a minute. So I'm going to show you now in the next couple of slides how changes that are happening, that, that will be bringing, bringing, will be brought forth to you. So we're increasing the foundation. Adding that hundred and forty two dollars a pupil. We are, we continue to look at enrollment and we're still trying to smooth our number out. When I mean smooth it out, we're trying to narrow in what the dollar, what it actually is enrollment increase. We know the head count per pupils by the buildings, but there's, we can only count what portion of time they're in schools and we have five to seven weeks after count day to do all that work. So that's what our buildings are doing right now. So we're, we're looking at that and trying to understand where are we going to come in now. We do feel comfortable though, October, we budgeted twenty five student increase. We budgeted, we're going to adjust revised budgets to an additional twenty students for the fall count. Now, February twenty five count because it's a blended count, February at ninety percent or at ten percent in October at ninety percent. February was eleven less than what we budgeted for. So that will impact it. So eleven less for February, twenty more for, for October. Increase of a hundred and seventy two thousand. We're in a revised at Meppsers offset three hundred and seventy four. We're going to increase the one time healthcare subsidy by a hundred and seventy nine thousand. Reviewed our special ed state aid categorical, which is based on prior year actual cost. So we're going to adjust that up to, to actual. That's an increase of ninety one thousand. And our ISD special ed funding for twenty four, twenty five, we're on a year leg with, with revising to, to final there while the IST goes through their audit process, but there's one time revenue of four, four hundred and seven thousand dollars. Where this was, and we've already budgeted for, I'm sorry, I didn't put that in here, budgeted for about a three hundred thousand dollar variance that we might have. We're adding another four hundred and seven thousand dollars to that. So we, as business officials, when we heard this a couple of weeks ago, we talked to them. And we brought up some concerns with that high of a budget to actual variance and us not getting, not not having that awareness that that budget variance was at large before now. Because this relates to twenty four, twenty five. We are working with, we do want to see, because we don't have our first estimate for this year for twenty five, twenty six, is a portion of that ongoing at all? Part, does any part of it relate to ongoing property tax revenue? Does any of it relate to interest income, for instance? So we're, I should be getting the first estimate this, this week. So I'll know more as the week progresses on if I can count, if we can count any of that as ongoing. Grants, only looked at a couple of grants so far. There's a lot more grants I have to look at in the next couple of weeks, but we're increasing those by about forty three thousand and you'll see an offsetting expenditure shortly. Or sorry, offsetting expenditure on the next slide for a total of one million, one hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars increase in revenues. In terms of expenditures, we have the mold remediation that Director Lieber talked about at the last meeting of three hundred thousand dollars use of funds. We have our Mesa insurance rates. Remember we budgeted. We don't know what the twenty twenty six rates are until about September. So we budgeted, we provided an estimate during budget season of what those were. They came in a little less. So that was about a seventy four thousand dollars savings. We added two sections at the elementary level. We budgeted for a decrease of one section. And with enrollment numbers, we actually were up one section over twenty four. So we budgeted for one to be decreased. It was actually one increase from twenty four, twenty five. So that was an add of two staff from budget. There was one last section at the high school. I believe that related to a retirement and the course, the elective that that staff member offered really wasn't highly sought after by students. So we elected not to replace that position. And there are three special ed parapros that were added based on student needs. So we added about two hundred and five thousand dollars for staffing costs. We have made some wage adjustments because of the transportation negotiations and provided steps to admin assistance and parapros. And that was about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Just from natural staff turnover, based on retire or sorry, not retirements, resignations that we found out since proposed budget, there was a lot of staff turnover. That was about a ninety nine thousand dollar savings. Insurance for our property insurance, casualty fleet insurance, school improvement and PD funding, that was an increase of the combined of That was an increase of the combined of those of about twenty thousand. And then the offset, the grants which offset that revenue. So it's a, a, the positive, the revenue and the expenditures would both. Change for a net zero impact. So that's about a five hundred and twelve thousand dollars use of funds. Revenues, as you will see on this next page, um. Revenues will go up to about sixty nine point one million, expenditures to sixty eight point four million. Leaving uh a net impact on our general fund balance of six hundred and seventy five thousand compared to. The original budget at ten thousand dollars, ten four eighty three. Um, we still are in process of negotiations with several of our bargaining groups. Not, nothing is included in the budget and the budget revisions for those. Um, so this is just showing you what we have available right now. Approximately, and I made a revision, but didn't send it to superintendent hood. This one-time use of funds ranges right now between three hundred and five to nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So included in our budget and the difference between those is the ISD revenue, the ISD special ed revenue that I don't know yet. We have to wait till we get our first estimate this year. And um our special ed revenue from the state, I'm going to do some projections of what I think next year's revenue will be. So I can kind of plan a little bit earlier for that than waiting for revised budgets to know if, if it's one time or if it's ongoing. So it's great, at this point, it, the range is three hundred and five to nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. I'll know more in the next couple of weeks. Um, so really if we start, if we're at the high end, nine hundred and eighteen. We would start twenty, if this was our final budget for this year and when that's where we ended, we would start next year at. Six seventy five minus nine eighteen. So we would start the year at a three hundred and forty thousand dollar-ish loss. Um, before anything else. This uh would currently put our fund balance at about nine point nine million or fourteen and a half percent of revenues of expenditures. There are many more things that I have to review for revised budget. So this will change before next time I'm in front of you. You know, we're still talking through negotiations. I'm still double checking all the staffing to make sure that um what I have in budget matches what is actually. In our buildings, we're fine tuning. That's the word I wanted to use before our enrollment figures. Um, got to review that ISD revenue, got to review all of our grants. Um, we have several insurance reimbursements and related expenditures that have to be reviewed at. Need to look at operational costs, including the utilities to see where those are coming in at. And our alternative student programming, so the things like dual enrollment, MBU, graduational lines, need to look at some of that. So there's a lot of things yet that have to be done in the next two weeks. Two, three weeks. So we, next slide, we were going to take revised budget in. The first meeting in December or the only meeting in December. But as we've talked about it and knowing that we're still in negotiations, uh superintendent hood and I felt that it would be best if we could. Review all of the budget revisions and move that process up. So our, our employee groups as well as our, um, the board is aware of where we stand. So um, we moved that up by a month. We'll, I'll be back here on November tenth to work through the last budget revisions. And the board would take action on November twenty fourth. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much for bringing all this information together in one presentation and your great work. Um, questions from trustees. Trustee cabinet.
Thank you, Liz. Um, could you give me an idea of what the insurance reimbursements are? Are we talking or what?
Yeah, so um, we had some bus accidents um that would be included in that. We have fire watched or the fire alarm system at the high school where we're incurring a lot of expenses. And um, we've got some information back from the insurance company. So I just need to compare to make sure. All of our expenses are going to get covered from that. Yeah.
Thank you.
There are questions? Okay, um, thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you on the tenth.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have a presentation about the Montessori update superintendent hood.
Thank you. Share from here if I may. Nathan, Mr. Brown will come out and work his magic again, I'm sure. Are you sharing the screen?
I'm trying, let's see. There we go. Thanks, Nathan. All right, um, so I'm reviewing with our trustees this evening, uh, work that was actually done last year. And this presentation was put together for the spring of twenty twenty five. Um, so I'll kind of update you as we kind of go along with it. For bringing it to you tonight, okay? So we go down one. Okay, so I brought together a group of our stakeholders, parents, teachers, administrators, uh, even students. Um, to review our Montessori program offerings pre-K eight and just to look at our long-range planning in terms of, oops. That moved into my screen. I apologize. I don't know what I just did. Okay, let's see. Let me pull that over here. Sorry about that. Just trying to move our zoom box and move the wrong one. And determine implications for the scope of our program and implications for our long-range planning. As the board knows, we're going to have some long-range facilities planning conversations soon. And knowing uh the feedback we heard about the Montessori building and program, it was important to kind of turn that rock over while we um. Consider long-range planning. So our Montessori program has been in place now for over twenty years. And we did a, a little evaluation last year to determine what are the strengths of the current program and. What could a future direction be and where some impacts and some further study um needed. Uh, for those of you that aren't aware, uh, Montessori has had a fixed uh enrollment controlled growth model. And we, we grew those sections over time. So we started in, in, you know, pre-K K, then we went up to one, two, then. Three, four, then five, six, seven, eight, until we kind of filled the program. And uh, there is no more room at the Okemos Public Montessori to. To grow that program and I'll talk to you about some uh cons to that right now uh in the future. Our trends do indicate that at the earlier ages, um, people want into the program, but there's waiting lists for Okemos families and they can't all get in. Um, and then we are seeing some declining interest at the older ages and I'll show you that and some next steps we have to watch for the school year. Uh, our elementary facilities, I said, doesn't have size to grow, even if we wanted to do offerings. Um, and the facility, as you know, here is aging. So we have an opportunity here in our future planning to realize that vision with a long-term. Solution for facilities planning and, and potentially a future bond. Okay. So here's uh who was on the committee, uh, some parents again, teacher reps, alumni. And um, a review of the purpose of the Montessori program and the purpose has changed over the years. When it first came to be twenty years ago, the district was in declining enrollments and had closed some buildings. And really the program was looked at as a revenue and enrollment enhancement. When that was, it was a choice program to bring in more people from outside the district. Uh, and to help offset further budget reductions for the district. Um, it was also there to provide an alternate methodology uh for students beyond the traditional K twelve schooling. So that kind of innovation of having some choice or an alternative um for our families. Today, though, however, the program is really um filled with Okemos residents, as you'll see. The school of choice numbers have, have drastically reduced over the years. And it's sought by our parents uh with fewer and fewer of those school of choice outside Okemos enrollments. Um, and it has done um. A good thing in terms of alleviating size and space concerns at our three traditional elementary schools. So the, you know, three, four hundred kids we have in Montessori, you can imagine if they all went back to their three elementary schools, those schools would be pushing. By fifty, six hundred each, and that's not a good size for an elementary. So, uh, so you know, elementary does have its own process uh for school of choice. And what we've done as a district is that lottery first, we have, you know, um, siblings can get in. Uh, through the school of choice law, they're, they, they get preference, whether it's Okemos siblings or a school of choice sibling. Uh, but then we've, we prioritize our Okemos residents so they can get in and then anyone outside of the district. And again, between siblings and Okemos residents, we're filling the program and there's very little space for school of choice kids. Um, most of those are getting in at the um, the PPK level. Uh, no Montessori experience is currently required in the pre-K four. In our five A, we did have last year Montessori experience required. However, I'm going to talk to you about one thing that we're changing to try to boost our enrollments at five eight in terms of that. And just a reminder, an ask um has been in the past, hey, provide transportation. So there's more accessibility for us. But we currently don't provide district transportation. So your family has to be, not only do you have to get in, your family has to be resourced um enough to be able to drive you to and from school at the Montessori. Okay, uh, and that's again for the K four, our Montessori students in the five eight can hop on a bus that's already in their neighborhoods. Uh, to those to Kenowa and Chipola. So our enrollments, so this is tiny for you to see, but the purple is filled seats and the blue is empty seats if you want to follow along at home. And we went back for five years and looked at how, what it was our enrollments and this is at. OPM, although when I'm breaking these apart, I, our Montessori teachers really want and staff want to really want to look at this program as a pre-K eight program. And that's a philosophy they want to approach it with. I'm just breaking it down here by building because it's easier to show you on one page. And you can see our program at the pre-K four is really at capacity. It's one or two kids off some years where we haven't been able to fill mostly a PPK slot. So. The unfilled percentage of students, I mean, we're well over ninety, ninety-five percent fit full at the pre-K four with waiting lists. Okay. Now, as I go to five, six, you can see again, the blue is empty seats and the purple is uh filled seats. And you can see that's pretty consistent, uh, except for the, you know, the kind of the COVID years there where it bounced a little bit, but we're at about. You know, seventy to seventy-five percent capacity in the, in the five, six building, which means, you know, twenty five. To thirty percent of our seats are open there that we'd like to see filled. Notice, noted, I did add the twenty five, twenty six numbers in there. They're at ninety two this year and, and thirty six empty seats. So again, very consistent to what, what we've had in the past. It's not in the chart, but I added them below there for you. So you could see this, because this was, this presentation was made last year. I didn't do it for the elementary uh for, for um, that one's still very full, so I didn't do it for that one. Yeah. And for seven, eight, uh, the good news is um, our numbers went up at seven, eight this year, but you can see that. Kind of decline every year, more, more blue, uh, empty seats to the point where last year it was only about half full. Um, this year, I'm happy to report that we're up to the second highest number we've had since twenty 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 one. We're up to eighty nine students. That has bumped back up to um. Almost, almost uh seventy percent capacity. Okay. Uh, with the seven, eight. Then if you want to get a look at um our, our school of choice numbers here, this just shows you by year. Going from twenty twenty one to twenty four, twenty five, our school of choice, our non-residents. And back in twenty twenty one, we had twenty one percent of OPM was um, school of choice out of the district. And last year it was ten point eight percent. And those are kids that are either aging out or they're getting in at PPK mostly. Uh, at KMS, we had forty percent um in twenty 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 one that were school of choice and now we have twenty five percent. And again, as the kids age up through that program, you're going to continue to see that to drop. Um, and CMS was forty four percent and is now um. Thirty three point eight percent. So we'd expect to see uh less, those numbers. Trail off less quickly at the, at Chipola and Kenowa because we haven't accepted kids into the program that haven't had Montessori experience. So it's kind of like when you're in, you're in. Um, and those would go down over time. But again, that trend holds true and our, our school of choice average for the district is about, I think we're at ten or eleven percent school of choice district wide. So to summarize our enrollments, um, OPM is the Montessori, again, I'm talking about them individually. But we want to talk about it as a whole program is consistently in the mid ninety percent range. Kenowa is in the low seventy percent range. And Chipola was declining annually until this year, um, which is, uh, was at about sixty two percent capacity. It was fifty one percent last year. Um, where Okemos families have chosen to enroll in the program over time and fewer school of choice. But again, not all of them can get in at central and they want to get in at central. So why are kids leaving at five, eight? So we have uh surveyed and done some exit interviews with parents pretty consistently with the principals, fifth through eighth grade. And there's really two major reasons. One is um, parents at some point say, hey, we want to. Transition to traditional because high school's traditional and we don't want the first time we transition to be at high school because that's when the GPA counts. So we're going to transition at some point and we'd either do it at the end of fifth and sixth grade because, you know. It's a natural transition at the end of seventh and eighth grade for another national transition. So we don't have a transition problem as we go to the high school and it counts towards GPA. The second thing we hear is they want to be with their friends that are outside of the program. And the way the Montessori program is structured is those learning blocks of time, which at the middle schools and. At the middle schools kind of lock the Montessori kids into certain hours for elective and certain hours where they would be in their learning block. Uh, which is different than the traditional. So they can't have the flexibility that the traditional schedule allows. Because there's trying, trying to stay true to the Montessori philosophy of those larger blocks of learning time. Okay. Um, strengths, a very, very strong program. Um, the reputation and the outcomes of the program are incredibly strong. Our, our academic outcomes across all our schools are strong and certainly that holds true for our Montessori. Uh, the training of our teachers to blend that Montessori philosophy with the public school um. Philosophy and approach is, is a strength of our program. And having those para pros support the individualized learning that happens in the classrooms, because remember you have multi-age classrooms here. So the class sizes are a little bigger than our traditional, but you have an extra adult in there to help manage the. Multiple curriculums are going on in the larger class size. Certainly that Montessori philosophy, um, the values in the curriculum, the way it's taught are engaging to our students and are really teaching. Um, our students a lot about being active citizens and role models in the world and being um, you know, sensitive to. To peace and their impact on, on each other and on the environment, which has built a great Montessori community. Uh, the kids and our Montessori teachers have a great sense of community across the buildings and are proud to be members of the, of the Montessori. Program here. We certainly see a great critical thinking, a sense of independence in the kids. Because again, they're doing their learning plans and are in control of their learning. Um, and that responsibility and empathy they have for each other are, are also hallmarks of the program. As well as um our teachers connecting them to service learning, um, connecting them to the real world. Um, and using some of those themed approaches in their teaching that really tend to engage kids. Um, and they're awesome at inviting us down from central office to see their learning, which we enjoy. And then another strength is that pre-K eight capstone experience in DC, which is kind of the culminating experience that our seven, eight staff members. Matt Prince uh takes them to, you know, that DC experience to kind of have that culminating activity that is part of the Montessori philosophy. And another strength is this was really the only choice if you, if you didn't want traditional within Okemos for our residents. And we've talked about in the past, should we do a, you know, a language immersion school or a baccalaureate or, you know, other, other types of innovative offerings. And this is currently the only one we have and is a popular choice for our residents. So um, the great thing in Okemos is we have a choice and we have amazing traditional schools. So you, you really can't lose. But again, some more people want this choice and it's just not available to them because we don't have the seats. Okay. So where are there some opportunities? So in going with that access, so more students want it than the spots allow for. And that transportation um not being provided is a barrier to some of our families. Opportunity to demystify, we hear, you know, that when we talk about them as Montessori kids or Montessori staff, that can be unintentionally stigmatizing. So we're working at trying to educate others about the program and they're not Montessori kids, they're kids. Kids who happen to be in the Montessori program. And we got to be careful with our terminology because we don't call them traditional kids, you know, so un, un, you know, demystify that. Okay. Uh, our staff is certainly a strength, but finding and retaining trained Montessori teachers has been hard. Because um, we get a lot of teachers that come with public school training and certifications, but we require them to commit to being Montessori trained. Will help pay for the training, but it's a big commitment over the summer or during the work year where they're either going to um. A residency, I think there's one in Cincinnati that a lot of our teachers went to or online courses. That they're taking in addition to their other coursework, in addition to their other PD, um, which is um, can be hard for, for someone. To do uh when you can right now get a, with a teacher shortage, get a. job in a non-Montessori classroom without having to do those things. So the good news is those that are trained have a passion for Montessori and want to, want to continue that. The other concern here is because the Montessori is a smaller school, they're specialists. So gym, music, PE aren't typically full-time because they're smaller than our other buildings. So they're always tend to be the ones that are traveling and that can be exhausting for our specialists. So when we have an opening for a specialist, they move, you know, the specialist here jumps on that and takes the full-time position, which lends itself to more turnover, which again, isn't great for the program. Opportunities of declining secondary enrollments, which we, which we talked about as well. Facility here, the age of the facility and condition, it's the oldest in the district. Size, there's not room to grow is an opportunity for us to address and you'll see my recommendation on that. And then our hope is to continue to build a strong Okamas Public Montessori Program, pre K eight, so people don't feel like it's a mona, you know, a middle school or an elementary program, a five, six program and a seven, eight program, building that continuity. So when you start, we hope you can see it through all the way to the end and eighth grade would be ideal for our students. Okay. So my recommendation, and it comes with some nuance here in terms of that I want to talk to you about. So recommendation is certainly to continue the program. I was not, never going to say not to continue the program because of the strength of it. However, there's some things we need to consider. So we need some flexibility, in my opinion, to grow the pre K four in the future. And I would like to, this winter survey, Okamas families, see, are there barriers to attend? And what is the interest in future enrollment for elementary? Does that still hold true? And we have waiting list data, but let's see what our, our families and future families, would they have gone if there was an opening? For example, we are right now implementing some strategies to increase our five, eight enrollments. And this is something of concern that we're monitoring this year and we need to check back in with our five, eight staff and administrators. Because that five, eight program, if it's not full, gets expensive. Okay. You can imagine a program that's at fifty percent capacity or seventy-five percent capacity. Some of those, if they were traditional, we would collapse the section. However, you can't really collapse a Montessori section because then you, you lose the ability to teach the kids using the Montessori philosophy. Because you have teachers that are, are trained in Montessori and also trained in their individual subject areas. So you kind of need to fill the seat you have. Otherwise, you could have a program five, eight that is like your three of your academics are Montessori, but one of yours isn't. You're going to be a traditional kids because the numbers don't allow it. And that's just not what our families have signed up for. So we're trying to boost the five, eight enrollments. And one thing we did to, to try to do that is we talked to the staff last year about allowing students to come in that didn't have Montessori experience. And they would meet with the teachers and meet with administrators to get kind of brought up to speed on what Montessori philosophy is because we don't want to have so many kids that don't know that methodology come in at five, eight, that it compromises the ability of the teachers to run the program effectively. But we don't typically get a lot of kids at five, eight that all of a sudden want to be in Montessori. I think we got two this year at seven, eight that didn't have prior Montessori experience that we've met with and the teachers have onboard and it's going well so far. So some opportunities for traditional students to join that five, eight to maybe help boost up those five, eight enrollments. So this year we're monitoring in twenty-five, twenty-six, but we're going to need a decision about where do we want to go with this in twenty-six, twenty-seven? And that's because of the two-year cycle of the Montessori curriculum. So the board really can't make a decision without some implications for kids repeating part of the curriculum or missing part of the curriculum. If you make a decision about the future of a five, eight and those off-cycle years and they got to go back to traditional, you're either going to get a repeat or miss something if you don't do those two-year cycles. So we've, you can see we've boosted the, the seven, eight this year, which is nice to about seventy-five percent capacity. But we're going to need to bring back to you, meet with the teachers in the spring or this winter and the principals this winter to say, how's it going? And do we think we can keep that number going up? If not, what would some of our ideas be to sustain those five, eight programs? Because they're, they're wonderful programs for the kids. So we'll report that out to you on how are our sustainability efforts working at the five, five, eight environment? And what ideas do we have to, to kind of shore those up? Okay. My recommendation is also to prioritize a new building in future bond planning is a big rock for a new elementary building that would be a Montessori building. We'd have to work to identify what are the potential locations, throw in commos and bring forth a recommendation back to the board that might be included in a future bond that our committee would have to consider. It would not be a standalone bond for a Montessori only. This would be a bond that also is addressing other, other needs that the district has. And of course, when I talk to the teachers about that, they're excited and what location and what's the building going to look like? And, and they're very, very excited about that because they've seen the work we're doing with their other, with their other buildings and things. So all in all, running the committee was a pleasure. Committed educators that do great things for kids. The program is strong and is a point of pride for the Okamas Schools and it's strong pre K eight. We just need to make sure that we're working on strategies to get kids to stay in five, eight and Principal Noble and Principal Sterling are working with staff and parents on, on that to help tell the story better about the kids that have transitioned to high school. Did you struggle or didn't you? So parents can make a more informed decision about is that transition going to be something that's really difficult or is it just a worry that we have? So we're working on that to try to shore that up. I did not want to make a recommendation to change the five, eight yet without having tried all those strategies first. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have. Tracy Dapsen.
First, thank you for this presentation. As a parent of two children who've been in Montessori programs since preschool and now they're seventh and eighth grade. I really appreciate how you laid out the program opportunities and specifically the awareness of the program. Because again, like I hear the Montessori kids and, you know, but I do, can you clarify under opportunities where you mentioned building one strong OPM pre K that, are, is that me like all classes in one building? What?
It does not mean all classes, one building. And here's why. So what we want the kids to do is feel the continuity of a Montessori program and not segmented pre K for a five or six program. That's a standalone and a seven, eight. That's a standalone. Let families and kids to feel that continuity between that program. So it's a program that happens to transition between buildings is the, is the hope and the goal. The recommendation is not to build a Montessori only school. And here's why. Students who want to be with their peers, their traditional peers, you're going to exacerbate that problem if you pull them out and put them in a building. Okay. The other issue becomes giving them the richness of the secondary offerings that are at Kenowa and Chipola to opt to be able to offer different specials at different levels becomes very expensive if you're just offering in one building with just a few sections of kids. So how would you run an orchestra with just Montessori kids? And not have all the other kids, I said Montessori kids, shouldn't say that, with kids who are in Montessori. Use my own language. It, it could diminish the richness of the experience that our kids have in the traditional schools because they would have more offerings than we could afford to give at a secondary Montessori. Yeah.
Thank you. I have a couple more questions, but I will wait my turn. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Win.
I'm curious, when you talk about possibly expanding the PPK to four size, what that means. I think right now there's like twelve classrooms and three hundred and thirty to forty five kids. So I was just wondering what you mean by expand with that.
So we would have to come up with a controlled growth expansion and it would have to be dependent upon the bond passing and the size of the new building. What I would hope to see is our traditional schools and our Montessori elementaries are sized like this. The traditional schools have you know, four fifty to five hundred Montessori's, you know, three fifty or so plus PPK. I like to see them do this. You know, kind of do this enough to hopefully have full-time specialists in all the buildings, but to kind of relieve a little bit of the feeling from our other buildings that we're big, we're approaching five hundred. That's big for an elementary. And could we get buildings that are, you know, all around four hundred, four twenty-five or so? Now we need to be careful with an expansion that if we expand the Montessori at elementary and all those kids stay, now I have a problem in secondary because I don't have enough space for them in the secondary schools. Because we have built for the sections that we have for, for, for so teachers in each of those. So, but it might take care of itself. If we have more kids in the Montessori and kids are still dropping out to go in traditional, then maybe the other ones would just be full instead of three quarters or, or half full. So we'll have to look at what, what does the interest say? And then bring back to the board, what's our recommendation on size of the building? I would say elementary is no, of no bigger than five hundred, which is what we're aiming for with the traditional as well. Yes, Tracy Shresta.
Just a comment. With, with the increase of five hundred in OPM or Montessori Elementary, how have you thought about how it would affect the staffing? Because we already have staffing concerns with, because it has Montessori teachers do have to be certified and this is coming from a Montessori parent too. And like a diehard Montessori parent, I guess.
So the recommendation there would be controlled growth, again, starting at pre K, K. So then you're only hiring a couple of teachers a year. And then you're next year, you're only hiring a couple instead of just kind of filling the building all at once and having to hire X number of teachers. Be much easier to do and approaching it that way. While retaining the current staff. Yeah. Question, trustee Burns.
Yeah. So for the new building, is the idea to build a, create a new building or to renovate one of our existing buildings or tear down and rebuild? What are your thinking?
Yeah. So we would work with our partners to help make that decision. I can tell you Ward Cliff is a, is a tear down and rebuild, just in terms of infrastructure at Ward Cliff and what it would, would cost. The sites that we have to consider are this building here, although you can imagine with our car line, having to have an active construction site and build in the back and run this building, probably not really very feasible. It can be done, but I wouldn't recommend it. But I want to run a committee to vet that. We could look at the Ward Cliff area. We could look at Powell Road area. We could like Edgewood. We could look at Kenowa. So those are the kind of the sites that are currently open that I'd want to pro and con and bring back a recommendation. Working with a subcommittee in our, in our partners to show what would be the best value for the district. As well as considering the spacing of our buildings is also important to us in terms of, you know, we have a lot of building going around in the, in the Bennett Woods area and to the north of Bennett Woods. That area is really missing a Ward Cliff School to draw kids north and alleviate some of the enrollments at, at Bennett Woods. So those are the things in addition to location we have to look at. That will all be a part of that pro and count in that ultimate recommendation. But we'll look at it all. Yeah.
Can I ask one question before I come back to you? I just want to make sure I get the, the, understand the strategies for increasing the five, eight enrollment because I heard three things. One was allowing students without Montessori experience to join, which again, we've changed policy. Sounds like it's been piling a little bit now. The other one is to educate families about kind of what does happen to kind of allay concerns about the transition. And then third is, is really about a new facility, which would increase the size of pre K four and ones. That's a longer term strategy. But is that, did I miss something else?
The only one I didn't mention too, is we really want parents to understand that when you come into fifth grade, your commitments for two years or you're missing part of the curriculum. If you reenter the traditional program and the same thing for seven, eight. And we think we can better communicate the parents so they're not making a decision mid-cycle that's going to harm, unintentionally harm their kid. And they're going to either have to repeat something or miss a content area. Steve Dapsen.
Thank you for that comment, Superintendent, because full transparency. I ran into that. And just didn't really think about it. I mean, again, they've been in since pre K. So I understand the two years of curriculum, but just didn't really think about it. They were to transition and what that means in reality, right? Going back to the plan to try to increase the enrollment in five through eight. And I think I've asked this before in other presentations around our Montessori program. Do we know how many students? Like, do we market to Radmore? Like, how many students come from there or I think it's children's, the children's house.
We, we are, we are marketing to them. I believe Radmore, one of them just started a middle school program too. Stacy, do, is that ringing a bell to you? Radmore, one of them starting a middle school program for Montessori. Good to speak on that. Okay. We are marketing to them. And I think they, I think one of them, as I recall, this has been since last spring when I talked about that, but we're on our website, we're marketing to the local Montessori's and trying to advertise for it. But there's just not a huge population to draw from.
Yeah, I guess we have a unique program, right? And just making sure that the community knows that we have this offering. So thank you.
Yeah, trustee Win.
I was just going to say that the middle school program for Radmore, I believe is supposed to start next year. This is an off year. So this would be a year that they're still coming here from that. But sorry, next year they'll have more grades.
Thank you. You answered it for me. Thank you. Yeah. Other questions, trustee Kavanaugh?
Thanks for that presentation. I've been looking forward to this one. Also, Montessori parent, I think all of us except for Andy. Right? Isn't that? No. Oh, Jason's not. It's still so crazy skewed now. But so many of those things, I think are discussions have come up in discussions with parents over the years too. I mean, so much of we need more parents, your communication to parents, again, unifying the whole program. You know, so parents know what's coming in five, six, what's coming to seven, eight. And more of like high school kids coming down and talking to them families. So this is how we transitioned. It went great, blah, blah, blah. We're doing great. Because that is the worry, you know, what are kids going to do when they enter high school? And then also that program is so small where it just takes like two kids in the friend group to decide to switch. And you lose so many, one of those years, I know exactly when it happened. You know, like, so I don't know if that's even a trend necessarily. It's just a blip that you know, when one friend leaves.
Well, it's hard as a parent, it's hard as a parent when you're, you know, when your bestie leaves and
It's really hard.
And then you know, the, the schedule is limiting because it's a Montessori schedule. Like, that's a tough decision to make.
It is a tough decision and it's worth sticking it out, or at least for my kids. But yeah, it's, it's, it's tough.
You know, and we've run some of the numbers if, you know, if we you know, if five, six or seven, eight numbers don't improve, what does that mean? And, you know, we've looked at, you know, sometimes it's the difference of you still have to add teachers because our, our five, six and seven, eight are pretty tight in terms of class sizes. So there's not a lot of empty seats to send these kids to. So you're not going to necessarily save a lot of teaching. You certainly could save some of the para pro expenses and you might save a teacher or two there, but Liz helped us last year run those projections and we need to run them again with the new numbers and you know, and, and talk with the staff there and bring it back to the board during, during budget and season to, to make sure that you know, the board understands the commitment we're making and the expense that is there. Because our dollars are limited, but it's a very, very positive program and our teachers are doing some of the things, very things you mentioned. Do family nights and bring other kids back and help them understand that, you know, this five, eight program is amazing. And hopefully we can, we can, you know, get it to be more full. Yes, Tracy Shresta.
So I was wondering, because this program is expensive and the number of children enrolled in Kenowa and Chipola is going down. So had, did the group, advisory group discuss about ways to potentially save money? What, what are some of the options where there could be savings in case we reach that point?
Yeah. So we did an analysis. Yeah, so um we we did an analysis of. Is the Montessori program more expensive than the traditional? We actually looked at that and. Was really at pre K four, especially or if our buildings are full. Um, because their class sizes are bigger and their multi age classroom, it's not as it's not. Much more expensive than you might think. So um for our, I think for our for our pre K four program, what was the difference of like, I think? Eighty thousand dollars over over five or a five year span uh over five grades, which is less than a teacher. Um, so. There's not a lot of ways to save money because the the cost is the people. Um, unless you got rid of parapros and I would not suggest that because. The multi age classroom, the bigger class sizes is the reason for the parapro. And if we had a teacher that was looping or doing a multi age classroom, we want to provide them additional supports because there's. Twice as many curriculums to manage, two grade levels to manage. That's a lot. Um, the Montessori materials are expensive, but we use them for a long, long time. And you know, our math, any traditional, any curriculum's expensive. So there's not really a good way to to trim at the edges of the program uh without really compromising the integrity of it. Yeah.
Other questions? Yes, trustee win.
I just want to lift up that I know Matt Prince was really doing a good job of trying to come back to OPM. And really kind of go to the PTO and educate about the Washington trip and educate about what the experience is at Kenowa. Um, so I know that there have been really good efforts with that in the last few years. And I think if we can continue educating at that very earliest level. Uh, the parents to know like what to expect going up and what the program's like going up. I think that that. Um, is really helpful information for parents.
He has certainly been a leader amongst others in the program and is really trying to. Help people understand that pre K eight experience with that culminating experience to go to DC and that we. You know, as we're fundraising for the Montessori, we can start fundraising for that and the pre K. By the time they're in eighth grade, maybe their trip is paid for. So they've done a really good job of taking this to heart. Um, I don't think it's any reflection on the teachers at all that some of those numbers at the five, eight are, you know, have been. Um, you know, a challenge for us. I I think it's a reflection of exactly what I told you in terms of. Friends and worries about transitions and the teachers have taken this very seriously and have been part of um trying to find solutions because they. Love the program. They've seen its outcomes and they feel so strongly about it was what it does for kids.
Trustee Kavanaugh.
I'll just second that though. The time that my kids have been through there to see the. So much more coming down and like unifying the program and more parent outreach. They have really done a great job. Stepping it up and trying to get it going.
I have one last question. So actually not about Montessori, but I know a lot of the uh program uh successes, you know, there's a lot of great things going. Obviously, and throughout Okuma schools at each level. Historically, uh, when was the last time uh Okamas talked about another choice option?
It has not been. It's not in my recent memory, so at least at least nine years.
Say that's Rihanna, maybe because she's leaving twenty years.
Yeah, no, so uh I could tell you when I was assistant superintendent and I know I've been superintendent six or seven, it's at least nine years. We have not. Entertain entertained uh a different like um choice option.
Yeah, so it's been some. And again, I know a lot of great like uh, like I went to uh the the incorrect DC meeting at Chippewa once because Donna Kurgaglia.
Yeah.
There's a lot of great things happening all over the district.
There is.
Okay.
So next steps for the boards, just so you know, to wrap this up is I will have a long range planning conversation coming up here in a month or two about. You know, future needs of the district to meet and I wanted this puzzle piece to kind of that recommendation to be out there before I brought that to you as to the why. Uh, and then you can expect to see, you know, winter and a spring, a follow up on some of our five, eight strategies. Um, in terms of um trying to boost those enrollments so we can make sure we're being cost effective at those levels.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have a discussion move forward regarding the uh Dr. Burns MOU superintendenthood.
Yes, so um we have been using Dr. Burns uh in his professional expertise. Help us with um how do we write survey questions for our stakeholders? And program that and Dr. Burns has been amazing in that. But we wanted to make sure that the lines um of Dr. Burns's commitment between him being a trustee. And being a volunteer uh helping the district were very clear and on the up and up. So we've worked with um uh Trune to help. Craft an MOU that would just um be really transparent in terms of um that relationship. What is and isn't allowed and what Dr. Burns is doing and why and it's not part of his official capacity as a board member because. I'm the board's only employee and we don't want those lines blurred. So tonight for you is a discussion on that MOU. Uh, in speaking with uh Trune today and hearing some feedback from trustees. So the MOU needs to be minimally between um the board and Dr. Burns. So the board members understand those. Um, that relationship because he's a member of the board. But could also include um the superintendent because he'd be obviously working with administration. So as it's written right now, it's just between kind of the board and Dr. Burns. So you understand the role. But we could layer on if the board so chooses the um administrative part of that MOU. Um, so that's clear as well.
Great, so uh we have the copy of the MOU and board book um and um, yeah. I as I was surprised to see my name on it because I'm not involved in the work. Um, and so I, you know, it would make sense to me to include uh administration as part of that. Since they're working on the day to day uh work, obviously. Um, but I understand the consent of the board and the president being the person who would sign.
And that would align with my recommendation as well.
Okay. Uh, trustee Doxy.
Uh, I support um that as well to. I was obviously why it's just the board president's signature on there. So I thank you for that feedback, but. Um, I agree with President Buffett that we could add that administrative piece and add your um. Signature line as the superintendent. Um, I would, I I'm thankful that we put this in place. Thankful to Dr. Burns for your support for the board and the district. Um, and this will formalize that process.
Other comments, concerns, questions? I had the smallest of of edits here, so I'm just gonna say it, but uh it's the uh third whereas. Service related strategic planning. I don't really think that's what Dr. Burns is doing. It's 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 strategic plan monitoring comma, including those related to. Which is just, I think that's more accurate as to the work. Is that right, Dr. Burns? Uh, so it does uh limit to retain professional services related to strategic planning. And I just strategic plan monitoring.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
That, I mean, this is, that's kind of more what the surveys are.
Yeah, yeah.
Send it on. So that makes, yes.
I'm sorry, are you looking?
Sorry, from the top of the document is the third whereas whereas recent budgetary constraints have blended OPS's ability. Okay.
Thank you. That's, I'm like, I'm following along on the third.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. My eyes deceiving.
The same.
Maybe that was, maybe that was my earlier version.
There's a resolution and there's also if you keep scrolling down the resolution and then there's a also the. The um. MOU.
So the the one on the discussion is the resolution.
Correct.
Okay. And then.
Yes, the one that says clean.
Okay. Oh, so it was in that document. It was in it, it was in the MOU.
And let me tell you the purpose of both in case there's some confusion about why there's two documents here. So one is a resolution that authorizes. Trustee Buffett to sign the MOU on behalf of the board and the other is the actual M C. Okay.
So this was on the MOU.
Correct.
So do we see the small modification?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, other comments, questions? Thoughts on this? And I want to echo what trustee Doxy said, thanking trustee Burns for um providing this uh invaluable expertise. Um, at this time, so thank you. Okay, and this will come up later in our agenda. Um, it's. Um, it's the first time for citizens to address and to see if we have anyone who would like to uh address the board, secretary Doxy. Uh, anyone online? Nathan? No, okay, great. With that, we will move to um hi- high school um uh student reports. We have Finn with us tonight. Thank you so much for hanging in there. I just made a note saying we need to move you up earlier next time, promise. Finn.
No, no, I, it's okay. I I appreciate and it's, you know, it's really educational to be in here and, you know, be able to hear this because. You know, I'm not allowed to have the opportunity to, so I appreciate the opportunity. Um, so we're getting closer to hollow weekend. Um, so the student council has put on a spirit week. Uh, matching today, I'm wearing the flannels for flannel day. Tomorrow's going to be neon day. Wednesday's pink out where, you know, you wear all pink. Thursday's class colors, so freshman is orange, sophomores were green, juniors were purple and then seniors were black. To include staff in this, they can wear any color. Um, I believe if I'm correct, they're wearing emoji T-shirts, um, but. Not a hundred percent positive on that. And then Friday is costume day. Um, going along with costume day is there's going to be a costume competition. There's going to be. Four group winners. The groups consist of two to four people, uh four individual winners. One staff winner and then the winners all get a prize. Uh, we don't know what the prize is yet as students, but you know, hopefully we find out. Um, clubs, uh, the O H S art box. Uh, met today and they painted some mini pumpkins, which turned out really cool. Um, Oakmoss Press is hoaxing their bake sale this Friday. Uh, Love for Elders met last Tuesday and they wrote seventy-one letters to cancer out patients at Sparrow. And then they will be having their uh bake sales Wednesdays and Thurs- Wednesday, Thursday of this week. Uh, Bandages and Beyond, which is a new club uh at the high school that offers medical aid to the homeless, is having a bake sale tomorrow. Uh, Earth Club in Marion Township Farmers Market are working together to compete in the Future City Competition. The Future City Competition uh is where you can come up with a city idea that removes food waste from. Uh, farm to table and keep citizens safe and healthy. And then the Oakmoss Theater Department will be presenting the play that goes wrong November seventh through ninth. Um, sports were kind of, you know, hard to go through, but uh especially with fall sports on the way out. Uh, girls volleyball, they won, uh varsity won three to oh, uh JV one two oh, and then ninth grade one two oh. Uh, Oakmoss Girls Cross Country placed third overall in the women's five thousand meter. Uh, qualifying us for states and then Rachel Smith broke her own uh school record with a sub seventeen mile. Uh, ended up being or sub seventeen time, uh, which was about sixteen minutes and fifty-nine seconds. Uh, the Oakmoss Boys Cross Country placed fifth overall in the men's five thousand meter. And then that qualified Ian Morgan for states. Uh, and then Oakmoss Girls Women Dive won their last two meets against Whit, St. John's and Ione.
Fantastic. Um, any questions from trustees? Just, I don't know, do do would you by any chance know when the first issue of the OHS press is uh paper will be out?
I'm pretty sure they already had the first one of the year. They should have their next one out shortly though. Uh, I believe they were just collecting the uh. Student submissions for their student submission page.
Okay, well, this subscriber is that you have to get his first edition, so to put it out there. Um, just encourage people also to um to subscribe if you haven't uh already. So thank you. Okay, thank you so much. You're free to stay longer or to go now. So thank you again. Appreciate it.
You also much.
Thanks, man. Okay, this moves us to uh superintendent reports and requests uh superintendenthood.
Yeah, thank you, President Buffett. Again, good evening trustees and members of the community. A few updates from me. Um. I'm excited to announce we will bring an HR director hired to our November tenth board meeting. So we'll be announcing the name and sending a letter out soon. Um, we finalized negotiations with the candidate and we're excited to introduce her at the November tenth board meeting. Uh, I want to thank again um. Peter, our interim director, for all the work he's been doing um. Probably going on gosh, eight or nine months now and he had agreed to stay two to three months um. And really helping us through that process. Um, so thank you. Um, we have a safety and security forum November eighteenth, just a reminder from six thirty to eight at OHS. Uh, we'll have Director Deal, Chief Grillo there and also representatives from Prevent to Protect. Will be there as well. So we're looking forward to, there's no. Antecedent uh for us having this, just something we wanted to do annually as a community engagement um idea. And it was very well attended last year and we hope to have it attended uh well again this year. So it'll be at the high school. I had my first superintendent uh coffee chat last. Week on the twenty-first, I was at eight AM. Uh, we had about six, six or six or seven of us there. Shannon, was there? It was great. Um. Great conversation just to connect with folks and hear, you know, what their thoughts were and. Uh, what they thought was going well, what they thought we could improve on. Um, it wasn't a presentation by me. It was sitting around a table and drinking coffee and just chatting with folks. Uh, which was thoroughly enjoyed, I think, and very insightful. Um, some of the things that came up, um. Uh, people wanting to to um. Understand um. Some concerns about why don't we have an adult out at car line at Kenowa? So we're, you know, we haven't had that and I know that's been shared before. So director. Mr. Sterling was following up on that. Um, uh, there was a concern about um. Rentals and if we're, you know, running after school, um, how do parents get access to those rentals? And can they get a rental right after school instead of having to wait an hour and their kids go home and then come back? Um, so that was a concern. We're going to follow up on it with Director Lieber. Um, there was some just great discussion about um. Uh, bond efforts and construction and excitement there. Trying to remember Shannon, what else was on there? Remember? Yeah, one of the parents grew up not far from where I grew up in upstate New York. So that was really fun. Like, wait a minute. We've been in all these meetings together and you're from about twenty minutes away where I grew up in upstate New York, so. Yes, we talked about athletic facilities as well. So it was it was great. It was great. And we'll be changing the times. We know that was during Caroline for the elementary folks and the next one will be. You know, we'll do one in the afternoon, one late afternoon, one in the evening, so we can hit as many people as possible. Um, let's see, an MOU for the senior center is in the works, been in the works for quite some time. We're in township board presented it last month. And they're making some revisions to it that they heard from their stakeholders and they expect to adopt it November sixth. And then I'll bring it to you for consideration of approval on the tenth. Um, that agreement is just clarifying the longstanding relationship about the current senior center. Um, there was, I think, a contract years and years ago between the two parties, but there hasn't been for quite some time. And again, good fences make good neighbors. So we're making sure the relationship between the township and district is very clear. So we can be efficient, effective partners to each other and better serve our seniors. Uh, there is a Bay county wide bond proposal in the works from the ISD. Inham ISD is preparing a bond initiative to fund the demolition and rebuild of the Beekman Center. Uh, the Beekman Center services special needs students across the county, including some Okuma students. The ISD took that program over from Lansing uh about two years ago. And worked with the Lansing School Board to craft an agreement about, you know, land purchase and um contingent on a a bond passing. But it'd have to be a county wide bond to to get money to fund the demolition rebuilding of that. Uh, I was there last spring and the building is in need of um significant dollars. Um, students certainly uh that attend there um deserve a facility that's uh. In better shape. So you'll hear more from that soon coming from the Inham ISD. Uh, Dr. Kemsley is working with his staff, looking at the current cell phone language. Uh, Dr. Kemsley is working with his staff, looking at the current cell phone language in the handbook, and I know this has been brought up at the board table before. So our current uh handbook language reads. Um, this policy allows students to bring their own devices to school and use it within the educational setting at the teacher's discretion. The use of those will remain a privilege when used responsibly and properly and can be revoked at any time. Uh, per administrative discretion. Cell phones and other devices are to be turned off and placed in lockers upon entering the building. They're not to be used during the school day unless a teacher has given permission for use in their classroom. It may be used after school for purposes of contacting parents for pickup. So Dr. Kemsley is working kind of actively with the high school staff right now at re-implementing uh more uh integrity. And fidelity and implementing that approach. And is really looking at a couple of things as one, um. Consistency between teachers. Uh, in implementing that and two, um, access by students uh during an emergency. So um, his intent is not to change the current policy that's there, but he's looking uh at working with teachers on. Cell phone use and um how can he within that policy make it less of a distraction? So um, he did survey staff and uh ninety-five point eight percent of his teachers. Wanted to exclude or reduce cell phone usage in classrooms for next school year because they see it as a distraction. Um, so um, I'll bring an update to you, but letting you know Dr. Kemsley is working on that within what's in the current handbook. And not trying to get ahead of any policy the board may or may not write. Uh, but they think there's some wiggle room to be consistent schoolwide with that, and I'll provide you updates soon. And with that. Oh, one more thing. Our transportation report is out as well, and um, this is our first transportation annual rev- review and report. And just praise to our transportation department and Director Karpinski. Um, you'll see, um. During a school year, we drive about ninety-five thousand miles. And that's actually less than our extracurricular miles, or about a hundred and twenty-one thousand miles of driving kids um outside of school hours. Currently twenty-five total buses and our average age of our buses. Um, is between four and six years, depending on if it's a regular route or extracurricular route. And the expected lifespan is about twelve to fifteen years, and right now we're still in the process of getting. Hopefully two new buses per year for the next six years, but it could be less than that, depending on our. Bond monies and the price of buses has actually gone up about fifty percent since we've um started purchasing them from a hundred thousand to. Almost a hundred and fifty thousand. Average time of our routes is about forty-one to forty-five minutes. A point of pride is our hundred percent compliance uh with uh Larry Decker, who's our um mechanic. Uh, having our police inspections conducted by Michigan State Police and having that hundred percent is a point of pride. For our drivers department and for Mr. Decker, so um, he's received a plaque for that performance and. Just means the buses we put on the road are in tip-top shape for our kids. Um. Our drivers continue to still skillfully navigate last minute needs of the district, and I can tell you. Um, when we have emergencies like we've had, like the swatting incident. Director Karpinski calls the drivers midday and says, I need you in in case superintendent needs to dismiss dismiss school and our drivers show up. Many of them leave other jobs they have. Find childcare and they come in and they're waiting for me to give them direction and I have them on standby, ready to go. Consistently, and that is a point of pride. Um. They're a positive professional group, patients and have a commitment to um. Safety for our kids first and connecting. And they're very proud of what they do and um. Kudos to them, so just a quick overview of our transportation report that'll be posted on our website under the transportation department and under our annual reports. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, uh trustee Burns.
Sure, uh, on the transportation report.
Yeah.
So the route time of forty-one and forty-five minutes, I assume that's. The time that the bus is running, not the average time that kids would spend on the bus.
That is from.
That's not leaving from the school.
Yeah, that's when they depart the transportation facility and then. Return to this, to the school, I believe, of the check. Okay, yeah, I'm not exactly time to reflect duration from departure at transportation facility or school. Yeah, yeah.
I think that's what that means, but I guess just making.
I'll clarify what that means for you, but I think what that means is from when they leave school to take kids home. It's an average of forty-one minutes, or when they leave the facility in the morning to pick up kids and drop them at school, it's an average of forty-one minutes. Yep, kids get on and off the bus during that time.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I just wouldn't want someone, I'm thinking, and you don't have to like follow up with me, just make sure that it's clear on the.
It's not saying every kid averages forty-one minutes on the bus.
Right, I'm thinking of like if a parent finds this, they're trying to decide if they want to do a car line or.
Yes.
Send their kids on the bus next year.
Clarify that, for sure, yeah.
Thank you, trustee Phelps.
Yeah, thank you for the transportation report. I guess, you know, this weekend I had the opportunity to talk to a lot of different districts. One, another point of pride that I would say here and is. A lot of other districts consistently have to cancel routes. Uh, last minute and families are kind of left scrambling. I mean, this is a a common thing around the state, and we are blessed. That that's not a thing here in Oakmoss, and that's a testament to uh Director Chris Karpinski and her drivers, so I really appreciate the the work they do there and the planning. Um, because that's no easy feat, that a lot of districts uh don't do that, and the fact that we do is a point of pride.
And 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 I would agree with that, and thank you for that, and that's also because, um. Our director drives. Our. Uh, executive assistant drives when we need to. We have some backups that will drive, like. We have so many cross-trained people in that department, they're willing to step up and do what it takes for our kids, and that is certainly a point of pride.
Trusty Shasta.
I just wanted to say thank you to to all the transportation departments, especially with. Point of pride of navigation with all the road closure, like I feel frustrated just driving myself in my car, so thank you so much to them.
Uh, I had one question back to the cellphone. Um, I I know you'll keep us posted on this, but it it's kind of wondering. Um. Both about, you know, policy and whether that's sufficient, and then also. And really a conversation at the board about po- policy for, you know, because we, again, reasonable people can disagree on it.
Yes.
Um, and I want to make sure that there's beyond just the OHS staff, there's a kind of broader conversation about. Cell phone news.
Oh, we're very open to that. I talked to Dr. Kemsley about, because I know the board is. You know, considering maybe some engagement or some policy around cell phones, we didn't want to get ahead of that. Um, but Dr. Kemsley, within the current policy, working with the high school staff thinks there's some. Consistencies that can be found um in terms of the policy and. Wants to. Try those out and maybe report back to the board on how those went. Um, in terms of uh really shoring it up, the teachers really don't like. Um, inconsistency between them. Uh, and kind of want that kind of taken out of their hands and saying we just need consistency. Um, but we also know people want access in an emergency, so he's working with his staff to come up with some ideas that. Think he said he would work on trying to front load it and potentially implement for the start of the second semester. So everybody's aware of what that might be and. Uh, maybe do a few test test runs with kids, and so we can hit the ground running on second semester with a. Kind of a um. More fidelity in in terms of how that might look.
Thank you, trustee Kavanaugh.
Okay, John, this wasn't in your report, but I bring it up every year, and I'm going to bring it up a little earlier.
What do we got?
Um, moving finals to the end of. Before break.
Yeah.
And I know we talked about it in the. We talked about it at the wrong time, so I'm talking about it a little earlier, so we can think about it for next year, and the realities of that, I. I keep hearing again from more kids who say like. Goodnight break so much better, we wouldn't stress over break, we really want to have quiet downtime. All of it, so. If we can get all of our minds working, we'll figure out how it works, how it can happen. So. Bringing it up again.
Yeah, my question for trustees to kind of raise it up to a level is, is that like a a policy or practice the board wants? Um. Or is that a suggestion of administration just to consider it? So certainly if, you know, if the if the idea of. The board is to say we want a policy that, you know, the. Before breaks, we're going to have this before breaks, then. That kind of helps helps us go, okay, it's the will of the board. If it's a suggestion for administration, then, you know, we'll certainly get. Feedback from. And we can work on process to get feedback from teachers, you know, the pros and cons of impacting that, um. And we probably want to set that as um look at our strategic plan and our goals and our to-dos for the year. And set that as one of the the yearly strategies, so then we're not just. Uh, we're aligning the work. Yeah.
Uh, I I had one comment on that same topic, just as, but I remember last time that trustee Kavanaugh brought this up. Um, and it is obviously a broader conversation than we're going to have tonight, but um is that there was going to be some effort to kind of put other types of work. Uh, after the break, so that wouldn't be accumulative finals after the break, and I don't know, can you? Do you know where that is?
I could be a little snow nuts ass.
Yeah. I mean, that that was just what I remember from the last time we talked about this, so just next time would be great. Thank you. Uh, trustee Shasta.
So, um. Regarding the same topic, I just wanted to understand. The reasoning behind why it was, it is after the break, because I honestly don't know.
Yeah, no, a great, great question. It's um the number of days in the semester when you split the semesters into two kind of equal halves. That the semester ends in mid-January instead of in. Because of the start of the school year instead of in December. So to kind of keep those numbers of weeks similar. For content. That's where it lands currently. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, other questions? Trustee Burns.
Sure, um, you had mentioned this uh bond that the ISD is going to be bringing to this. Do you have any more? I mean, are they going to come give us a presentation? I found myself wondering like how many Oakmoss students attend Beekman and things like that.
So I've requested all that information, and they're just putting their buying committee together, and we'll be happy to come present to the board. Uh, talk about what the ask would be from our taxpayers and give some demographic information about the impact to Oakmoss once they have it.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Wen.
Um, going back to the transportation report, I was wondering, is this just for board members or is it also available like on the website?
Yeah, on the website.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Shasta.
Um, question about the Beekman again. I rem- correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't Beekman Center already go through renovation after ISD took over?
So the ISD did some initial renovations just to get the building, um. Roof's not leaking. Toilet's not leaking. Like that level of renovation, basic. Um, but there's much more needed.
Other questions? Okay, we will move on to a board reports and requests and start by acknowledging the receipt of correspondence, uh. Hannah, Hannah.
Yeah.
I feel bad for not knowing that, excuse me, Hannah, uh regarding student, uh contacted board regarding student sleep and school start times, Brett Medier. Uh, contact the board concerning student cell phones, Ryan Morris, uh requesting an interview. And an anonymous constituent uh contacted the board uh regarding uh communication with the board. And with that, I'll open it up to board reports, committee reports, ad hoc reports. Trusty Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Um, so our, what do we call it, community engagement? Committee met the other day, last week. Um, and we are planning our first um board coffee. Talk, Tom has a cuter name for it, but I can't remember.
It was trustee teas.
Trustee teas, that's what I want.
Trust teas.
Trustees and coffee. Um, so anyway, we're thinking Monday, uh, or no, sorry, Friday at ten AM. This Friday, this Friday, Halloween.
Trust teas, right?
Yeah, like.
Yeah, trustees.
Like I'm drinking my cup of tea with the trustee.
Or trust, here, U S T.
Coffee drinkers are welcome.
Trust teas. Sorry, sorry, didn't punch you.
We probably get shirts made and everything. Um, so. Ten o'clock, Big B on Marsh Road. Friday, correct?
Yes.
Right, this Friday.
This Friday is the first one. Um, we will also create a sign up. We we want to have some, just like uh superintendent chats. Have some during different times of day. Uh, we'll create a sign up sheet um for trustees if they are able to. This is not, this is a, you know, not not expected. Um, anyone can do do them, but um we, as a reminder, we need to have between two and three trustees. Uh, sign up, so not one and not four or more uh to to ha- to hold one. And uh. We will uh look this superintendenthood to figure out how how to trans uh to to communicate these uh in in some way going forward, but.
You can do that.
Yeah, first one Friday, ten AM, Big B, uh, big B's.
Yeah, very custom. Bonus. And so we're thinking once a month.
Once a month. So the next one would be in November.
November seventeenth, I think we're thinking is an evening one. Is that right? Afternoon.
We will, we'll put, we'll see in this spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Other committee? Reports or ad hoc committee reports? Okay, uh, with that, we'll move to um. The some action items, um, within the action items, there's a consent agenda to expedite the business of the board, which groups a number of items together to be dealt with by one action. However, items in the consent agenda may be extracted by individual board members. By individual board member request for further discussion or clarification. Can I have a motion, please?
I moved the port of approved items one through three for immediate implementation and appropriate action. Item one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Item two, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. And then three, approval of the minutes of the executive session meeting on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Support.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Wen. Any comments? Yes, trustee Kavanaugh.
Yes, I think we need to update the minutes for the special meeting, um. Trustee Wen forgot to put herself on here, we're taking notes. So the votes, you don't even show. Somebody have a different copy? I mean, it keeps happening tonight. Is that what everybody sees? Because you just don't exist.
Oh, yeah, her name's not on there.
And so, because that's an important.
Yeah.
Well, it needs to be. Did such good minutes except for yourself? Why not?
Okay. Um, so that's kind of an amendment to those minutes. Got that, just secretary Doxy, yes?
Uh, yes, um, and an amendment to the uh cobert thirteen minutes to. Um, modify the end time. I have nine fifty-one PM. When our meeting adjourned.
I'm sorry, what meeting was that?
October thirteenth, regular.
Fifty-one.
Um, meeting of the board. Nine fifty-one. I had noted as our um. Adjournment time.
That sounds right.
Yeah.
Okay, other? Amendments to the minutes or what's in the consent agenda, trustee Phelps?
No, I was just saying, I can make, I can amend my motion if. Now, okay, so there's other changes.
Any other discussion or changes noted?
Okay, I moved that we amend the motion by um adding trustee Wen to the minutes and making the end time change suggested by trustee Doxy.
The amended motion is made by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Phelps. No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? I just have it seven oh. Um, we also have some other actions. First one relates to first reading of board policy. Can I have a motion, please?
I motion that the board waive the reading and adopt first reading of board policies, forty-four oh eight termination. Forty-four oh nine non-renewal. Fifty-two oh two unlawful determination. Harassment and retaliation against students. Fifty-four oh five oh, title one, parent and family engagement policy, and fifty-four oh six, title one, foxes. Support.
Sorry, moved by trustee Wen, supported by trustee Doxy. Uh, any conversation about the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? I just have it seven oh. We next have a final reading uh of another set of policies. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board waive the reading and adopt final reading of board policies, twenty-four oh four dash oh, public participation at board meetings. Thirty-one ten, data breach response, thirty-one fifteen, non-discrimination, anti-harassment, and non-retaliation. Thirty-one fifteen A, definitions for thirty-one fifteen series, thirty-one eighteen, title nine, sexual harassment, thirty-two oh one accounting. Thirty-two eleven, post issuance tax compliance, thirty-two twelve, post issuance disclosure compliance. Thirty-three oh one dash oh, purchasing and procurement, thirty-three oh one A, purchasing and procurement with federal funds. Thirty-three oh seven, construction administration, thirty-four oh two, drills, plans, and reports. thirty three oh seven construction administration, thirty four oh two drills, plans and reports, thirty four oh seven asbestos management, thirty four oh eight firearms and weapons, forty one oh one nondiscrimination, forty one oh three whistleblowers protection, forty one oh five B religious workplace accommodations for employees and applicants, forty four oh seven discipline, fifty one oh four age and majority, fifty four oh one dash oh parent involvement in education, fifty four eleven student promotion, retention and placement, fifty four twenty sex education, fifty four twenty one work-based learning experience, fifty six oh three section five oh four, fifty seven oh one abuse and neglect, fifty seven oh seven dash oh dual wellness policy and fifty seven twelve concussion awareness.
Support.
I have moved by trustee cabinet, supported by trustee stressed the uh, discussion. I'd like to say one thing, it's actually more about board policy in general than about this set of policies, but just to put a placeholder for kind of, and I again, I say this with humility because I haven't served on the policy committee, but just figuring out some other way to do policy other than just updating through the our 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 through trune, just feels like I need these, but they're each kind of disconnected and it seems like we need to have some other way of um, doing policies that kind of hang together as a set of policies, like administration policies, et cetera. So just to comment about our our process and thank you, this is no disrespect to the policy committee. I know that all I've heard is a ton of work. I just want to kind of put that out there as a hope for our board that we have to think about some other way to to do it, maybe to supplement this or to do it in some other, some other way to be thoughtful about it because I struggle with that. Trust you, doxy?
Yes, I just, can you clarify your answer?
Yeah, so the way that we've been doing policies since I joined the board was mostly driven by through and updates. True updates.
Correct.
Yeah. And so I just kind of wonder if we might have some, you know, what are the issues that we're facing our community? But is our intention vis a vis policy to help address issues, policy issues? And um, to make sure that we are, you know, having those kinds of conversations around policy and not just kind of the legal requirements.
So as um, a policy committee member since I've been on the board, um, just a reminder that we have this suite of policies that true that we agreed, right? To um, update our policies. And so for the last few years, we've been going through those package we agreed um, as the policy committee to not just do a blanket accept all of these changes. And so that takes time. And so once we get through the package that is the intent of the committee to kind of go through and to your point, um, just as a board, are there other policies that we need to look at? Um, and come up with some type of cadence, but the packages have been coming as they have been because we've been trying to get caught up for what was presented. So just wanted to clear.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And uh, touch together, yeah.
I was just gonna say, I was on before we adopted the trune and after and before it was more like that where we would whatever was pressing in the, you know, in the district door. It's just that these new true ones. Last time it was adopting them all. And now that they just keep sending these updates and then you're just kind of stuck with, you know, you have to update. And so it's hard to when I was on, it's it's hard to like, put them into blocks that makes sense, you know, as you're asking because there's so many. So again, my hope is in the future, it doesn't continue like that, that they can't be updating them every single year like this.
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess that's what I heard my first year on the board, which is that okay, we'll get through this year and then we'll get back to some.
Well, and I wonder if some of them are the federal changes though.
There they are.
And that's what has made all of these, you know, I mean, so hopefully.
Well, and and to everyone's point, I'll just interject my own to like, it feels like we're there and then we get another set of updates.
They're just random.
And yeah, so and we just got some, two weeks ago, I think I sent to the policy committee. So getting to that Oklahoma's oh, the Oklahoma's issues as opposed to the standardized trune issues. I think we want to do both and and just find some efficiencies there. Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, it's yes, trustee when?
I think this was already said, but I just want to like super clarify again that like the reason why it takes so much time is because we don't just adopt the trune policies, like we split them up across the committee members, we thoroughly go through them, we compare them to current ones. We then meet about them and discuss each single one individually. So like, it's just a lot of work to accept changes um, and review them. And that's why we haven't really had the the ability to look at additional ones because this is such a heavy lift to just go through these. And it feels like to us as the policy committee that this has kind of been our mandated priority, especially when it's tied to federal laws and we want to be compliant. Um, it seems like that's kind of what we have to focus on. But certainly I think that we feel that we would like the opportunity to look at other policies that feel more meaningful um, to our work. Um, so I hope, I hope that we're able to get to that as we're getting to the end of kind of this push. Hopefully there are a lot of work for me.
That's, that's, that again, I didn't mean this wasn't about this one. It's just more did you want to, trustee doxy?
Uh, yes, and just point of clarification, the um, policy updates are not all federal driven. There are some that have been um, modified or updated due to uh, state legislation that's been updated. So I just wanted to um, make sure everyone was aware.
Yeah, so uh, trustee Phelps.
Yeah, uh, just a couple of points. Um, I think it's important to note the reason why we started contracting with Trune was because we weren't making all these updates that Trune is sending us every year and we've kind of gotten some trouble, not, we didn't get in trouble, but we found some instances where our policies were woefully not in compliance with what current law was, which we don't want to be in a position of. So I I understand it's voluminous. I understand it's a lot of work, but no one said policies are just easy. I hate to say it. You know what I mean? It's kind of part of the gig, I guess. You know what I mean? Like especially if we want to Oklahomaize them, which I think we do. The vast majority of school districts do not individualize their policies. They just accept them as a slate. I don't love that idea. I don't think everyone on the board does either. So uh, to me, it's part of the process. And I will note, I mean, board members, if there is a suggestion of a policy we want to look at, there's something I would bring it up to the policy committee. I think there's bandwidth for for that to kind of get going. I mean, I will know we've made those changes in the past. I mean, the one that comes to mind immediately is like, I mean, the for better, for worse, the field trip policy, that is not a trune thing. That is an Oklahoma specific thing that we've put in policy. Um, you know, kind of since this process has begun. So I think there's opportunity, but I I just don't want to lose track of the site that those true work that we're doing, looking through these trune policies is important and I do think it's valuable.
Sorry, I'm sorry, trustee burns.
Um, yes, I would just say, I mean, I don't know what the right answer is, but that speaks to like, well, how would a policy, how would something come to the policy committee for consideration? So like, I think of uh, like superintendenthood brought something for memorials that we've been discussing. Um, but and that kind of like arose, kind of like came through the ranks, but so I don't know if it what the right approach is, but like, I think there needs to be a process to avoid going the other way of like, oh, well, we've got like, we've got all the trune policies done and now here's thirty seven things that people have emailed us that like, I would think we should have a policy on X, Y, Z.
I just want to be super clear. I'm not diminishing the work of the policy committee at all and the importance of doing that, that please, I know it's a a ton of work, a ton of work. Um, yeah, I I was ready to, but it's filled up. So uh, it's true. It's true. It's true. It is true. It is true. You can look at the video from uh, January of last year. But uh, but so maybe some balance, uh, you know, in some way to do it. And then certainly, you know, we want to be compliant with a law. It just feels to me right now, I've been hearing about the imminent end of the updates since I joined the board, or actually it was a year long project at that point, and it's no one's fault. They keep coming. It's just that I kind of felt like we've lost sight of some of the the forest. And maybe it's like a curriculum review process for every so many years. I don't know the solution, but just want to plant a seed for future. So thank you for indulging me. Um, with that said, we had a motion by trustee Kavanaugh, supported by trustee stressed that approve that set of policies. I'm all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. The eyes have it seven oh. Okay, we now have uh, to uh, a motion about adequate information to proceed regarding the uh, Burns M O U.
I move that board wave policy twenty five oh three A requirements and take action on whether to adopt the resolution and M O U regarding member Jason Burns.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. Any discussion?
I would just make sure that friendly amendment of including the superintendent uh, as part of that um, M O U, I think we discussed that earlier, is understood by the board before we vote.
Yeah.
I'm believing that will be part of the next motion that this motion is so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The eyes have it seven oh and
I didn't say I just.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. I didn't hear anything afterwards. I projected, so thank you for clarifying that. Um, next up, we have a resolution. Now have a motion, please.
I moved that the board waive the reading and adopt the resolution as amended, accepting the terms of the memorandum of understanding and authorize the board president and superintendent implement this resolution.
Moved by trustee Phelps, uh, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. Any discussion? Seeing none, this does recall a roll call vote. Secretary doxy?
Tom Buffett.
Yes.
Jason Burns. Katie Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Andrew Phelps.
Yes.
Laney Schrepper.
Yeah.
Julianne Win.
Yes.
And I am yes.
Six oh with one extension. Great. Uh, next up, we have a few discussion items. First is power school litigation, superintendenthood.
Yeah, so um, districts uh, have the ability to join a nationwide lawsuit against power school and related defendants concerning the December twenty twenty four data breach from power school. As you'll recall, um, France Law Group, who is a law group uh, from California is representing districts in that litigation. And we have um, joined other lawsuits with France Law Group. Uh, first was our vaping lawsuit that I think the district and executor director lens can help me with this. I think we got seventy or eighty thousand dollars from that one. The vaping, do you remember? Yeah, I'd have to look. So um, we also are involved in a social media um, lawsuit uh, um, against Meta and others regarding social media. So this is uh, something we can opt into. Um, because we're a district that used power school as of December twenty twenty four. Um, there is no cost to the district. The cost would only come out of any damages should we win uh, as a part of uh, uh, being members of that lawsuit. Um, if the board, I need authorization from the board if you want to opt our district into that. Uh, what it would require from the board is a action. Um, to sign the agreement that is attached. Um, it would cost staff about uh, ten hours of work to fill out the discovery information that would be needed to opt us in. Uh, we do not uh, expect any staff to have to appear in court or to participate in depositions. Um, Trune would not represent us in this. There's not co-counsel. It would only be France Law's group. And their um, portion of the proceeds would be thirty percent of any award that a district receives. I have no way of knowing what the award would be. So if the juice is worth the squeeze, I look at and I'd want trustees to look at. It would cost us ten hours from administration doing paperwork, no more than ten hours uh, for some potential monetary benefit that is unfortunately unknown to us. So um, we got to discuss that and see if the board wants us to move forward of being a part to that and authorize me to opt us in or to not. The decision does not need to be made till December thirty first. So it doesn't, is not something that needs to be made to tonight, but I wanted to make sure that um, trustees had some time to discuss and then put it on as an action if we so desire.
Questions, points? Trusty Gavin.
I'm just saying, I'm in support of joining that litigation. Um, I think that was a, it was pretty serious breach. My kids, I think, I don't know where all of our kids, my kids are in that data leak. So I'm supportive of it.
I have two thoughts on it. I certainly was upset about the data breach. Um, I'm a little bit wary of, you know, joining a lawsuit against one of our partners, providers, you know, just as a concern. Um, so that's kind of one, one piece. The other piece is if my reading of the second paragraph is correct, it means that even if we don't do anything, we'll be lumped in with other districts who are your power school users and there might be some class action resources coming from that. Do I understand that right?
I believe so, yeah.
Which again, just
may be defaulted into it is what it kind of says.
That's what it says, which maybe there's a less of a share of it or whatever. I don't know. Yeah. That's just my other, my other thought. Feel very different about this than say vaping or the other ones we were into. Other comments? Yes, trustee burns.
Yeah, so just a question. So I understand that this is just for the uh, the district opting into the lawsuit, but just so our families know, like, would, is there another lawsuit? Or like a class action that individuals can join or anything like that for our community members whose kids have been affected?
I do not know the answer to that, but I can ask.
Great question. Trusty stressed that.
So just for the clarification um, for the community to if OPIS does opt in to join this, and since we are still using power school, will there be any implications to our families and students?
I I'm not aware of any, but I can, I can certainly ask.
Are there comments, questions? So do we want to have this on another discussion item at a future meeting?
Yeah.
Give some answers. Okay.
Answers and we're discussing further.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um. We
Let's, I think we should do that in close.
Okay, yeah. So um, we, we now have, uh, yeah, just do comments first, uh, second opportunity for comments because we're going to close session. Yes, thank you. Well.
Yeah. Yeah, but is there?
Yes.
There is a
Yes, but on other matters on this.
It's actually, it's
Might be a, yeah, it might be a result of close session.
So at this time in the meeting, uh, there's another opportunity for public comment. If we have folks who would like to address the board. Uh, I don't see any blue sheets there. Is there any, is there anyone online who'd like to comment?
Comments online.
Okay, thank you. Um, and with that, uh, we will, um, I need a motion to move into close session for the next part of the meeting to discuss personnel and also attorney client privilege.
Yes, I moved that the board adjourned to executive session pursuant to section eight parent C and eight parent H of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations and attorney client privilege information.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. Uh, this does require a roll call vote.
Tom Buffett.
Yes.
Jason Burns.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Andrew Phelps.
Yes.
Laney Schrepper.
Yes.
Julianne Win.
Yes.
And I am yes.
Okay, that is seven oh to move into closed session. When we come out of closed session, we will adjourn. Um, so I don't think we need a videotape uh, anymore, but uh, with the ending time will be recorded for posterity. Yes, we'll take a three minute bio break and then start the session. Thank you.